How you doing?
Okay.
Oh, I've been better. I don't know if I told you, when I was gone, Margot was in New York, I was in Hawaii, and the toilet on our second floor burst and kind of destroyed most everything. So I'm kind of homeless. Not really, but, you know, at Eastland Suites, which you may as well be homeless. Yeah.
Are they? Oh, I get it.
Well, with a 90-pound German shepherd, 400 square feet is not a whole lot.
Wow.
They did, yeah. And I didn't sneak him in. I wonder if everyone can take their seats, please. So. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bolin.
Here.
Councilmember Milowambwe.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Hey, Kim, how you doing?
Hi, I'm well.
Okay. Before we go any further, I think we need, even though it's not on the agenda, this is okay, to, can we have a motion to permit Alderman Bray to participate virtually?
So move.
Move her in chief? Okay. Moved by Alderman, Councilmember Milowambwe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Painter. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambwe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. And we're just announcing for the record, Kim, that you're gone for work purposes, correct?
Yes, on business.
Great.
Scott, can you turn her up, please? She's hard to hear.
Yeah. We're turning you up a little bit there, Kim. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Oh. Fantastic. Okay. All right. Okay. As we move forward, we have a proclamation recognizing the 2019 Friends Forever International Visitors who happen to be in our audience. And do I have someone who would come forward to accept the proclamation on their behalf?
You can come on over here.
Again, I rarely bite. Okay. And we have a proclamation recognizing the 2019 Friends Forever International Visitors where Friends Forever International empowers youth leaders to connect, strengthen, and serve communities around the globe by combining their passion to make the world a better place with the skills, experience, and resources required to do so. Whereas Friends Forever International is that youth are recognized and supported as catalysts for building a better world, and whereas Friends Forever is a 33-year-old program based in New Hampshire, and whereas the Friends Forever International Program is based on six principles they call their recipe, R, identifying resilience, E, practicing empathy, C, strengthening communication, I, achieving impact, P, encouraging playfulness, oh, sorry, E, giving effort. Sounds like kinds of things that all of us could learn from. Whereas through leadership skills, public speaking, community service, team building, and bonding, the 10 teens learn they are more alike than are different and return to Israel ready to continue building peace. And now, therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby recognize our Friends Forever International Visitors and ask all residents of the City of Bloomington to welcome them. In witness hereof, I set my hand and the seal of Bloomington to this, and we have a separate proclamation for you and all of your colleagues. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We just had a session prior to this one where we voted on several things, noncommittal things. They were all sitting in your seats and were sort of impressed by ayes and nays. Anyway, sorry. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Anybody else? Linda? A loss for words? Please come forward. Right over there. Thank you for, if you do not announce your name.
Yes. My name is Jonathan Maron. I'm a teacher at Leobek School together with my colleague Costa from the Sisters of Nazar School. We visit here, and I wanted to thank you very, very much for your hospitality. I'm amazed by the warmth that we've felt for, received from everybody here, and we're learning so much about life in what I think is a typical American city, more typical than what we hear in the news, and it's really fascinating what we learn here, especially for the students, most of whom have not been here before, and so they're learning so much, and we'll take that home and see what we can do with it. So thank you very, very much, okay?
Thank you. It's been an honor. At this point, we move to public comment, and just to clarify, if you have some specific issues or specific concerns, you're welcome to come to the Mayor's Open House, which is between 4:30 and 5:30 on Friday before a regular city council meeting, so there will be one this Friday, just around the Fishbowl. You can ask anything. Sometimes we can solve your problems in real time or at least give you a response. For public comment, it is our policy to just listen and not to respond. And you have up to three minutes, and we have one person who's asked to speak to us, and that is Katie Cassing.
I didn't like speech class, so I'm sorry if I am a little shy today. Good evening. My name is Katie, and I'm a taxpayer and consumer here in Bloomington. I'm here tonight because I'm interested to hear about the presentation and discussion for Item 6B, video gaming. After reading the background summary from Mr. Jergens, Tomlin, and Ratburn, sorry if I mispronounced anyone's name, I believe some information given to you may be misleading for tonight's discussion. On the second page of Agenda Item 6B, you're presented with multiple figures and only one definition for net terminal income that is not even used as a figure in this summary. When discussing total wagering activity and increases from 2014 to 2018, you should ask these individuals to explain what total wagering activity means and how it is used in the report before you today, along with a working explanation of each section of the Elementary Gaming Board's report. You should have also received a 2014 and a 2018 report with the May 2019 report for comparison. In May of 2019, we actually have less businesses with video gaming than these highlighted years in the report. I know some figures may have increased over the years, but that is just part of a normal business cycle. All business owners want growth for their businesses, just like an employee wants a raise each year. We should think of our city as growing and thriving in a great environment to attract more business owners and more residents to Bloomington. Mr. Gleason has expressed that he would like to focus on economic development during his time with our city, and has employed Melissa in her current role to help with this. However, the community groups, interest persons contacted, and community development impact still remain as NA on these sections of your report today. I believe research is needed to educate your audience so they may create an unbiased opinion and decision from facts, and I hope that that is your view, too. So today, I ask you to ask questions about the information you're receiving to remove any uncertainty and bias that may have been presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We next move to consideration and action to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from the June 17, 2019 meeting, as requested by the City Clerk Department. Is there a motion or corrections?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Crable. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Second, there are a couple of seconds, but I'm going to go with the nonsecondor-in-chief, Councilmember Painter. Any further discussion on these minutes? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Oh, we can, I can do that one, but, I'm sorry. Apologize. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
Oh, hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, as well.
Oh. I apologize, Kim. I'm sorry. Were you in favor of the minute?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, never mind. There are, it was nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Sorry, Kim.
No worries.
I won't forget it this time. Okay. We move right along then to presentation, discussion, and direction on future agenda topics, and the first, I'm going to turn over to our City Manager, which was an update and discussion regarding boards and commissions, as requested by the Administration Department. Mr. Gleason, I'm going to turn that over to you for about 10 minutes, and then we have a council discussion for about 15 minutes, roughly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of the discussion about boards and commissions that was started a month or so ago. And the request tonight is that maybe we can find common ground, but I look to the Council to see if we have consensus on the direction that I'm proposing. Since we had last met and had this discussion, I think that I said that there were no impacts to the current boards and commissions. What's changed in the meantime is the Transportation Commission that, in fact, would have had a couple of items that came before them, and Council took action to reduce the size from eight to seven. We had four existing board members, and in the meantime, we've lost two of those remaining four for work-related reasons. So we do not have a quorum with the Transportation Commission, and there's been a couple of items that would have come before and are currently placed on hold that would come before the commission. What I'm proposing, and I want to make sure that the direction is satisfactory to the Council, the input from the Council received is very much appreciated, and trying to find the most common ground where we might find something that's acceptable. One thing that I did hear is that information that you guys have access to has to be up to date. Agree 100%. That's already been taken care of and addressed at the city. While we have access to websites and board vacancies given, that information's up to date, and also we have a process internally, I think we can do a better job as staff and put that in a consolidated location, and what I would suggest is the City Manager's update, where every time we have a vacancy to a board or a commission, that's something that I send out in my City Manager update. Anytime that there is an interested person within the community that's saying that I'm interested in anything you have available, or I'm interested in these specific boards and commissions, I share that with Council as well. Also, I think housed in that City Manager update on that portion is a request to all of you, you know, that you might have constituents or people that you have in mind that might be someone that staff should reach out to, that you're going to reach out to, and they become a part of the potential process. So I guess what I'm asking for direction is that I will do exactly what I just outlined and promised, but the improvement or the remedy to some of the problems that we had is that the information is consolidated and is given to you guys through my City Manager update. I'll turn it back to you guys.
Comments? Alderman Milowambwe, and then Mathie.
Just a quick question. So when we send you those requests or those names of folks who might be interested, and are you gonna, I'm assuming you'll kick that back out to the rest of the group afterwards?
That's exactly what I'm going to do. That way, you have the opportunity to share your opinion or ask additional questions of a candidate, you know, either one-on-one or send those through the mayor as he's prepping for an interview with these individual candidates, but yes.
Alderman, Mathie.
Just for clarity, so it seems to me that there's two different paths that people are coming in for boards and commissions. There's one for people who want to step forward and volunteer themselves. They fill out the form on the website, they turn it into Circuit Clerk, and then they're going to go to you, and we can get feedback on those people at that time. The second path, which is, I think, that we talked about last month, is that the mayor also goes out and asks people that he feels would be qualified, would you please consider this? And then at that point, then they go and they fill out that form and stuff like that. And either path, I'm good with. I would just like, you know, the process that was outlined to us was, or the current process that was outlined to us, is that the mayor then tells Beth that he's considering appointing somebody, and Beth sends an email to that person at that step to say, the mayor is considering appointing you, and you're going to be on a future agenda at this particular time. One of my feedback points to you was, is I would like to insert the notify Council step before that person gets an email from Beth that says, the mayor is considering appointing you at this point, right? So that way, we can head off any kind of miscommunications and just, if that notification comes in your City Manager update to us, that's great. However, if that's the methodology we want to use, but just for me, as long as the Council notification step happens prior to that individual getting an email and saying, the mayor is going to appoint you to a board and commission, you know, please come on this particular day, that'd be my feedback, is I want us to be communicated to first, prior to that next step of them getting an email saying, you're being appointed. I don't know, and I can stop talking, but I think that's kind of where I'm looking at right now, so.
The only thing I would add to that is there's really, there really aren't just two, there's multiple. Another is, I got one today, city council members saying, I've got somebody that I, you know, that I think would be very good for X, Y, or Z. Or like your technology committee, you have all the applications to, I've said, hey, you think they're good? I'll put them forward. Right? So it's, if the council at the input side wants to do that, that's, that would be very helpful with nearly 300 board and commission. If you've got names that you can feed me, that's great. We do have a pool of applicants, some of which are probably have been around for a decade or more, some of them only a few years, some of them only a few months, so we do have a pool of names, but usually, they're more likely to be but usually, they're more likely to be people who the council's recommended or that I've run into or that has mentioned something or who have come to me. It's really a small minority of people who just like send in a...
Exactly. As long as we put that notify council step first before they get an email, because the process that was outlined to us was they were getting an email saying that they were being appointed, and then like seven steps down the list, it was notify council that this person's gonna be on the agenda. So I'm just asking, let's move that up to the, up higher on that list and make sure that we don't do all the extra work of those seven steps in case somebody has a problem with a possible appointee. So that'd be my feedback on it.
Aldo, excuse me, council member.
Just my question is, what does that mean for the status of the four individuals that were brought forth before this discussion happened at Committee of the Whole? What is the timeframe? What are the next steps with that? Do we need to begin that process over again? That's just the point of clarification.
At this point, they're not approved.
Right. But I'm wondering if those four names are gonna come back up at the next city council meeting or if something about the process needs to be reset?
That's a decision I'd have to make. My inclination is to only bring one of the four names for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
Understood. And we'll revisit what action was actually taken by council when this discussion began. If they were tabled, we'll see what needs to be done, if council action needs to be taken.
Right. And what I would ask is, you know, from my perspective, is if you do have some people that you think would be very good, please send me their names. I could really use them, because very often, we really are searching, and especially if a councilperson is willing to vouch for them, that's really, really, very helpful. Because there are many people who, frankly, in the course of a 15-minute interview or even a discussion on the phone, can sound very good, but maybe that's not how things turn out. So if there's somebody that you know will be very good and you've had experience with them, please let me know. As I say, there are only two people that I have ever turned down in over six years that council members have ever asked, and it was the same council member, and it was because they did not live in the city of Bloomington, the two people. So I may not always have been able to give them their top choice, but I've been able to find a way. And then that's the other thing, is that it isn't... The only concern that I have is that this sounds a little more like a micro-level decision where it's really more, it's more of an interconnected web. So if somebody doesn't come here, then can I put that person there? You know, how do you put the puzzle pieces together? So let me go from Councilmember Crable to Black to Bellon. Bellon, excuse me.
I wanted to add on or ask a question on what Alderman, Matthew talked about. Is there a timeline that we have that, you know, okay, we're thinking of appointing this person to the Technology Commission. You have 14 days to voice your objection. Is there any kind of timeline now?
I actually, and again, I'll follow the direction of the majority of you, but I was going to try to avoid a set timeline, a set time that, you know, like a 14-day timeline. I just was gonna kick this information out as quickly as I possibly could. To Alderman, Matthew's point, good point, we'll do that, and just see if that might improve the process. And if it doesn't, we'll revisit it. Or if I'm told tonight that you do want a 14-day, you know, interval in between, you know, those steps, I'll do that. But I was trying to avoid that, to be quite honest.
Whether... I've heard talk about opportunities for council members to express concerns about potential appointees, and I'm not sure if I understand what happens if there is a concern expressed. Let's say that I am just adamant I don't want this person on any commission, and maybe I'm the only one. What happens then?
Well, that has to, I mean, as a structural issue, not, I can tell you how I might handle, you know, particular things, but as a structural issue, it winds up being up to the mayor to decide whether or not they wanna take their lumps.
So we don't have a veto power, right? Like, one per councilperson?
A single, yeah, I mean, if you did, I mean, if every single individual did, it would be really hard to fill in those 300 appointments.
Yep, I understand. I just wanted to make sure.
And I do have to, on that, there have been times where I have put people forward that I've not been totally confident about, right? But since I'm not mentioning names, they were better than nothing, and I thought they were. And sometimes I was wrong. So, anyway. Alderman, Black.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I like the idea of no timeframe, just to get as quickly as possible and bring it back. And yeah, I think if someone's got grievous concerns, we can always vote no on it, and that's our prerogative and majority rules, for better or for worse, and that's how it sorts itself out. So my one piece is, I guess, at a high level, I'll just put the plug in. I really like to see folks who have completed Bloomington 101. Nora does a great job with that program. I think that does a really wonderful way of looking at the whole city and all the different departments and programs, and provides a holistic approach that I really value in our boards and commission appointees.
Thank you. Alderwoman, excuse me, council member.
Alderman, council member, doesn't matter. Thank you. I've gotten some feedback about putting appointees individually on the council rather than lumping them all together into one item on the consent agenda. I don't know if that would work or if people would support that idea, but it was feedback that I received. And the other thing, I checked the website, there's a few commissions. One specifically is the Downtown Task Force that probably, you know, should come off.
Should be remade, moved, yeah.
But anyway, check the website and, you know, update it for members and commissions that maybe don't, aren't functioning anymore.
Right. Historically, I think the reason why here and at other places that they've just gone on as a group is because it's usually on the consent agenda.
I was just gonna add to that, there's been a couple of them, usually in April, when all like 30 people are renewing at the same time if they wanna stay on, and they haven't met their nine years, and that would be like... I mean, it's not like we haven't had consent agendas that are out of control before anyway, but then we're gonna be into, you know, I wanna pull AZ or something, so. I mean, it could be done, but I think that if we really wanted to pull somebody, we could pull them and just say, "This particular person, I would like to pull their name and move it to a separate vote away from everybody else." So that'd be my thought.
That could be done behind the scenes, I guess. I'm just putting out the suggestion that I heard. And I guess it would apply maybe more for the appointments that would come after April. I mean, I understand in a practical sense that, you know, these renewal would just go in one consent agenda item. But if somebody comes up in August, and it's only one or two appointments, that maybe they'd be handled separately.
And they come, the thing that's routine is, there is no routine, other than the fact that there is the bump in April. Late March, April, I try not to push it to the very end. So there's a bump of names, tons of names. And often, when the staff member says they've done a good job, they've shown up to whatever. Yeah, I certainly don't need to meet. I mean, I would, I couldn't keep down a day job if I had to sit and meet with all of them. So I'm just being honest about how that works. We haven't heard from Alderman, we've heard from you, Alderwoman, excuse me. Councilmember, and then councilmember Black.
If you don't mind, I was gonna kinda respond to a question from what Donna had, and this is more for Jeff. Conceivably though, legally, we have the ability, if it does appear in one item, say, you know, "We're gonna be appointing, I don't know, Peter Parker and Bruce Banner and Thanos." We could pull Thanos and then approve Peter and Bruce. So, yeah.
I don't know, Thanos is misunderstood.
My question is whether the one appointment that you're talking about still moving forward gets us out of the quorum issues. My concern is that, you know, there have been these items that haven't been able to be brought forth. So are we okay?
That does not.
It does not.
Because we're, I have to now go back to the, and there are quite a few people who are interested in Transportation Commission. Once this is decided, then I can push forward some names to the Transportation Commission. Transportation Commission's our biggest problem right now.
That's the only one that was affected in terms of quorum?
I think that's...
That is true.
There are a couple that are on the cusp, right?
Gotcha.
That's correct also.
That could have maybe one person who doesn't show up, and then they can't meet.
Understood.
Pardon me? Kim, yes. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, but I mean, Kim in the broader sense. Kim, do you have any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the conversation that's going on. I'm getting some feedback here, but I'll say that I agree with the City Manager's proposal to, "Let's try some changes incrementally and see what I can assess." I'm not supportive of a timeframe at this point. And I think perhaps if we go forward with new appointments, possibly listed as separate items, and then maybe reappointments listed as group names, that might be a good way to approach the question about vetting a singular name.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, are you good with what you need to know?
No, yes, I am, and thank you for the input. And I do think internally, we can do a better job as staff, keeping things updated, getting information out to you guys so that you can digest and provide your input before it makes its way to an agenda, and we will.
Right, thank you.
And thank you for agreeing to consolidate the information. Like, I agree that the appointment process is not routine, but we're going to routinize the communication, and that will help a lot. And I look forward to getting some information about appointment suggestions.
Great, thank you. And just because there's not a vacancy, if I could just add that, just because there's not a vacancy at a particular point, even if somebody only wants to serve on something and you think they'd really be good, please let me know, because I wanna keep them in a, like, first-tier pipeline. So the moment, there could be a resignation at any point, as we've seen on transportation. And especially if an alderman or woman is willing to vouch for somebody. As I say, as long as they live in Bloomington, I've never had any problems with that. Always willing to do that. And it makes my job easier, frankly, rather than having to sometimes try to beg people to serve in a particular capacity for nothing. So, thank you. Okay, anything else? Yes?
I do have a question. One of the students thinks that when they were doing the council role-playing, they think that they might have left their backpack up underneath. And I think we found it, okay?
Friends forever, for sure. Okay, we move right along to the next item, 6B. Discussion and direction on the city of Bloomington's moratorium on the issuance of video gaming licenses. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Gleason and Mr. Jurgens, who have some presentations for us, and then we have approximately a 30-minute council discussion. Turn that over.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To revisit where we've been, there's been a moratorium that's been in place. I think it was set to end April 1 of this year. It was extended to September 1. The direction that council, I'm sorry, that staff received was that we wanted to see, we had a newly seated General Assembly. We wanted them to get through the spring session, and we wanted to see if some of the impacts, you know, with the decisions that were gonna be made, how would that trickle down at the local level? And there were several other questions, comments along the way. Our approach, our staff approach to this, and Jeff Jurgens gets credit for running the lead. He's gonna be the primary presenter tonight, is really just trying to present the facts. I mean, this is a policy decision that's at your level. So we're gonna walk through a, I think, a short presentation and take direction from council. Also, we know that we have a September 1 moratorium deadline. We have options at the end of the presentation for council to consider. In no way are we trying to lead this at all. Again, this is a policy decision for council, but we've left ourselves, by doing this at the Committee of the Whole in July, we also have the August Committee of the Whole, and we also, depending on the direction we receive from council, we have the possibility of a fifth Monday meeting on July 29. So without any more delay, there's Jeff. I'm gonna call him to the podium, and there you go, Jeff.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and get right into it. As the City Manager said, we were first going to kinda charge with seeing what shook out in terms of the gaming expansion bill that was approved in Springfield and the cannabis bill. So this is taking several hundred pages of legislation and trying to boil it down into one slide here, really trying to hit the highlights. But on the gaming expansion side, for video gaming, the changes that we are gonna potentially see, number one, the number of machines at each establishment can increase by one from five to six. Large truck stops can now have up to 10. Large truck stops is a new definition. Truck stop is currently defined as three acres and sells 10,000's of diesel fuel a day. A large truck stop is three acres and sells 50,000 gallons of diesel fuel a day. So if you qualify as a large truck stop, you can have up to 10. They're upping the bet right now, you can only bet up to $2. With this new legislation, you can bet up to four. The max, go ahead.
Before you can, I apologize, I'm not gonna do this under each one.
No, go ahead.
But on this one, this is, do we have any authority to say we do not want any more than five? Like, do we have to go to six?
No.
Or do we have to allow 10 at a large truck stop?
No, we can prohibit them altogether if we want to. So we've got...
But we could say we only, we don't want any more than five.
That's right.
Or we don't, we don't want even less.
Five terminals per establishment, correct.
Thank you.
The bet has gone up. It used to be, under the old law, you could only bet up to $2. Now you can bet up to four. The award has more than doubled, gone from $500 to up to almost $1,200 that they can give out. They've also created a new thing called a progress award that can be up to $10,000. So those are the kind of the video gaming changes that are in, that's in the new legislation. There's also sports betting that is part of this new legislation, but really looking at where it's gonna be allowed. We do not see a lot of impact with video gaming. So for example, you're not gonna be in a video gaming establishment also doing sports betting type of, you know, facilitation, things like that. Sports betting is gonna be more online. So, you know, your computer, probably your phone, that type of stuff. It's also going to be at racetracks, casinos, large sporting venues, things like that. Finally, then there are the land casinos component of the gaming bill. There's gonna be a number of land casinos that are gonna be part of this. Not in McLean County, I think probably everybody's aware of that. But we're probably gonna see a land casino in Danville, in Rockford, Waukegan, one in Williamson County down south, another one in Cook County, and then what they call the mega casino in Chicago. So if you think of, a video gaming establishment can have, you know, now under the new law, up to six terminals. A land casino can have the one in Danville, the one in Waukegan, Rockford, 2,000 gaming positions. The Chicago can have up to 4,000 gaming positions. So, and the two county ones can have up to 1,200. So overall, gaming in Illinois, you know, a lot of expansion under this bill. But, you know, comparatively, probably little impact to what we would see locally in Bloomington, you know, from this bill, other than the ability to increase the number of terminals if you want and those types of things.
Jeff, can I ask a question real quick? So you said that our video gaming places aren't gonna have sports betting, but will sports betting places have video gaming? Because that may not be the same answer.
I don't, I don't know that that will necessarily be the same answer, but I don't know, I think the answer is you won't have to worry about it in Bloomington know. I think the answer is you won't have to worry about it in Bloomington, because the only places that are going to have sports betting are your large sport venues, your racetracks.
So not like the off-track betting place that's on the west side?
There, I think there are going to be three off-track bettings that are going to be licensed, but I'm not aware that it would be, uh, potentially here.
Okay, thank you.
So it'd be, if, if it was any, it would be very limited, um, for the sports betting. Um, so that's, that's kind of a brief overview of what the gaming expansion bill looks like. Uh, the legalization of cannabis, also, there were some questions from the previous council on how that may impact video gaming. Um, and I think one of the questions was, well, will people be able to go into these video gaming establishments and, and smoke cannabis? Or, or, you know, do cannabis edibles or those types of things? And the answer to that is, um, no. Um, there, the private consumption of cannabis is legalized, but there are a lot of regulations and restrictions on public use of cannabis. So, um, and I was talking to the, uh, uh, corporate council at the municipal league today about this, because there is some strange language about, uh, what municipalities might be able to do. Uh, but I think it's, it's pretty clear that municipalities are going to be able to even stop what the state would permit in terms of like, uh, being able to use cannabis on premises. Also, taking into account that a lot of businesses, or probably no business, is going to want to allow that and take on that insurance risk, or that type of legal risk that you might not even be able to get insurance for. So, when we look at the cannabis side of how that might impact video gaming locally, uh, we don't see a real big impact or correlation between the two. City Manager already gave a, a brief overview of where we've been with video gaming in, in the city. Started in 2012. Uh, in February of 2018, we put our license requirements into effect, started the moratorium, extended that last February, and then in March, we adopted the 500, uh, per video gaming machine licensing fee. Uh, just some additional information about, you know, the numbers of terminals, uh, in, uh, the city. Uh, as you can see up here, it, it has been pretty, um, flat. After they were legalized in 2012, and you, you see a few years of, you know, some establishments getting put into place and, and terminals getting operational, uh, after you kind of see that, you know, it's been pretty flat in the city. Uh, we'll get to some of the specific numbers in a second. Uh, looking at the revenue, um, and I've got the net terminal income in here, um, and you, you heard a public comment about, you know, what does net terminal income mean? Basically, that's the difference between what is put into a machine versus what is taken out. So that's kind of what is left for, for the, you know, the owners, the operators, the state, the city, everybody else to take. So, this, this chart kind of shows how that net terminal incre- income, uh, you know, some slight increases over the year. Um, and, um, I think it's currently around 16 million, somewhere around there. This chart shows a little bit better about what the city's distribution is from that. So, of the net terminal income, that money does not go all to the business. That difference doesn't go all to the business. A lot of different people taking pieces of that pie, including the state of Illinois. Um, I think their current take is 30, and under the new law, it goes up to maybe 32 or 34, uh, percent. The city gets 5% of that. So, that's what that blue, uh, represents there. And then that's what that blue line represents there. And you can see that our incre- our, the, our take of this, of the tax distribution has increased slightly, but it's, it's not a huge fluctuation over the last few years. A couple of other things we wanted to talk about. Um, we have been fairly strict in the city in terms of allowing gaming parlors, or sometimes people will call them gaming cafes. So if you go, uh, somewhere like the city of Springfield, uh, you'll drive around, you'll see a lot of places that that's really all that business is designed to do. Um, they've got five gaming terminals in there, they've got a refrigerator where they're handing out sandwiches, and, and that's what it is. That's kind of a gaming parlor. In the city of Bloomington, you don't see those. Uh, we don't allow them, we don't give them liquor licenses. And there's a provision in our liquor code that says, if that's your primary focus, you're not eligible for a liquor license. And you have to get a liquor license unable, eh, eh, to be able to get one of those types of video gaming licenses from the state. Um, so, and, and looking at this, well, what does it mean to have gaming as your primary focus? Uh, the liquor commission looks at the design of the establishment, the number of machines compared to customer seating, the square footage, a lot of different factors that they're looking at, employees, revenue, those types of things, to make sure that the city's not giving out a license to somebody that just wants that liquor license so that they can get a gaming permit.
Jeff?
Yes?
When were these code sections effective? When did they become effective?
That's a great question. Mayor, do you know off the top of your head?
These are the, it's maybe that this is, this was just done informally, but we have held people to these standards since the very be- since I've been mayor.
2013.
Because we had, we have, we had one, well, this is also in the paper, we had one institution that was, uh, at 66% gambling. And, uh, now they're down. Uh, but, um, I mean, that's just, that is a violation of our code.
Yeah.
And it, it, it has to be below 50%.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks like, if my information's correct, you're around 2013. So, and it's, you know, um, and that, as the mayor said, so when we've had issues or concerns with that in the past, those have been cited and they're brought in front of the liquor commission to address to make sure that they are not violating these provisions.
No, we did have, if I could just clarify that, and I think this would have come about the time, maybe you started, we did have a, an institution in downtown Bloomington that claimed that they were a restaurant because they had $185,000 in video poker receipts. So we did clean up our ordinance in 14, I believe. Uh, so there would have been changes, which says a restaurant's main, it's, it's, it's not non- liquor sales, yet your main objective is to sell food.
Right.
So, so there, there may have been some changes in 14, I'm sorry.
Right, and, and the city's, I think, been very successful. And, you know, again, if you look at a community like Springfield and compare it, you know, seeing a lot of those places to, to Bloomington, I think you've been very successful in making sure you don't just have those gaming parlors, um, uh, in your community. So, right now, we have 52 gaming establishments, 243 operational terminals. Um, our current requirements, um, we've got a lot of contact information that's included, have to make sure that your current on your taxes, um, a lot of different information. The permits, the licenses for a video gaming, uh, establishment run May 1st to April 30th. Uh, the number of terminals are currently limited by the license. So right now, uh, when you are applying for a license, uh, to be an establishment, you have to tell the city how many terminals you have. And that is on your license, and that is what you're limited to. We actually have some establishments that don't have five. A couple of them have, you know, two or three. Um, the majority of them do have five, but a couple have less than five. But they are limited to how many are on their license. Uh, the licenses are subject to revocation if they're violating any of the ordinance provisions or state laws or anything like that. And there are pretty hefty penalties if you try and operate a, uh, video gaming terminal without a license, including daily fines that can range up to, I believe, 500, and, as well as seizure of the terminals. And, uh, we've, we've developed a good working relationship with the Illinois Gaming Board. They contact us, we contact them. Anytime someone's looking at doing something with video gaming within the community, they know we're one that regulates that and restricts that. And so, um, we've worked very well together. The current moratorium, as the city manager said, runs until September 1st. Uh, under our moratorium, the only exception is for gaming terminals that were operational as of March 1, 2018. Now, you can waive it under some provisions that were recently amended for fraternal organizations, um, that had applications in prior to March 1. But otherwise, you had to have, um, oper- terminals operational as of March 1, 2018. And, and, uh, City Manager, I think you were going to maybe comment about a potential change on that one.
Yeah, I can. Uh, there, there's been recent, and this is sort of a, a side conversation, but it, it's appropriate to have now. Uh, there might be one, uh, exception that the council wants to cons- uh, consider. Uh, and what I was going to, uh, suggest is the possibility that this could be a July 22nd agenda item if this larger moratorium discussion is not complete. But, uh, the Parkview Inn, uh, two and a half years ago burnt down, uh, they've rebuilt bigger and better. Uh, we were, uh, on legal firm ground to deny their request for a video gaming terminal. Uh, but, uh, it could be viewed as unfortunate, the circumstances that they were caught in. And, uh, they are more than up and running, uh, doing very well. This might be something that, uh, council, uh, if, if I sort of get the head nods, and I think I am, I think I'd prepare this, uh, for a July 22nd, uh, agenda item to, uh, get them approved, uh, to receive their video gaming terminals like they had before.
With that, with the background, we get to what some of the different options might be. Um, this is not an exhaustive list, uh, but we've, we've kind of developed three different options. And the first option has a couple of different varieties that it can take. But this would basically be to lift the moratorium. Uh, the council could set the number of video gaming licenses at a set amount. Uh, so for example, right now, we have 52. Maybe you set it at 52, maybe you set it at 60, whatever kind of the, the direction is. But then, um, we enact, uh, standards or, uh, procedures for issuing new licenses. Uh, so for example, you know, um, again, following the certain food and beverage requirements, uh, perhaps we enact location requirements, restrictions, so there are not multiple, uh, facilities within, uh, proximity to one another. Uh, we can look at neighborhood considerations. Uh, for example, one of the things we've talked about is if something were proposed to go into a residential neighborhood, maybe the council wants that first to go to the planning commission for a public hearing, so you get some feedback on the impact that that might have on the neighborhood. Um, so basically, this option one is saying, okay, we're going to lift the moratorium, and we're potentially going to have more licenses, but we're going to set some requirements for that. And either in some communities, the council, or, you know, the council just says, okay, these are the, the requirements you have to meet to get a new license, and then staff, the city clerk, whoever, just issues those licenses as long as they meet those requirements. Another alternative would be for the council. Every time somebody wants a new license, they have to come in front of the council and make their case that they meet these requirements, and then you decide whether or not you want to up the number or not. So, there are a couple of different variations there that, that you can take with regard to this option. Uh, option two is basically the same, but you just don't put a limit on the number of licenses. And this would be more a situation where we would establish certain criteria for who would be eligible and who could receive a license. And then, you know, uh, perhaps staff could issue those licenses.
Now, under, under number two, like, the council has to approve new liquor licenses. So, except for the, the, maybe a couple of exist- existing places that might, um, add machines or put in machines, the council's still going to have to approve the liquor licenses.
Correct. Except for fraternal organizations, they don't have to have a liquor license. Veterans organizations, truck stops, they don't have to have liquor licenses. So, um, but you're, you know, that, those are a small fraction of the gaming establishments we have in Bloomington.
Can we divorce gaming licenses from liquor licenses? I mean, right now, I, I've heard many times where the assumption is that if a business gets a liquor license, they're going to be allowed to get gaming licenses. Can we say that you can get a liquor licenses, but, and then after you get that, then you can apply for this, and you may or may not get the video gaming license, right?
Yeah, and right now, they are divorced. Um, they're not connected. In some communities, um, you know, so right now, you've got to have, if you're going to have video gaming, it's not enough for you to have a liquor license. You've got to get a video gaming license from the city, or the state's not going to give you permission. They're not going to allow those terminals to be installed. So we could keep that divorced, absolutely.
Perfect.
Uh, some communities will do a supplemental video gaming license. Um, and then you've got to, you know, but it's like a li- supplemental liquor license. But, you know, quite honestly, I think kind of the system that, that the city was going down works better, um, and is, is going to be more effective.
And we, the, the one thing, like, there, there are many places that have liquor licenses that have no video terminals. Like, most of them.
Yeah.
Like, Fridays isn't going to have video gaming and video poker. So, it's just not appropriate to the business. And we usually ask, like, I guess we always ask them, uh, if they're going to put in video poker machines. But, I'm sorry. But you, just, they're, but they're, if I can clarify divorce, you, you can't have video poker without having some kind of liquor.
Except if fraternal or-
Except fraternal, although I, I think they all-
So I think, right.
Serve that, yeah.
And I think what, what, when we talk about divorcing these issues, they, they would both have to get their liquor license, but they would also have to meet the eligibility requirements for a video gaming license. So they, it'd potentially be two different tracks that they'd have to go through, two different licenses from the city they'd have to get.
And when we're talking about one or two, have, have staff looked at mirroring, um, the, the Town of Normals restrictions that they have in there? Because the town has some, well, what seems to be fairly strict restrictions because they have 60-ish machines versus our 200s.
Except they have video po- they have video poker parlors.
Uh.
That we don't allow. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for that. That's, that's good to know.
Alderman.
If an establishment has-
Council member.
Thank you. If an establishment has, let's say, two, but potentially could have six, right? So, and they want to have six, what, so what happens? How does that process work?
When, well, the current process is, when they apply, they tell us how many terminals they want, and they can have up to the maximum allowed by the state. So unless, when we redo this, you know, we'd have to say, you can only have five terminals. Or we'd say, you could have as many as the state allows, or, you know, or somewhere in between.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to think about it in the context of the, the number. Let's say if we went with, uh, number one, option one, and we say, okay, we're only going to allow 60, then, um-
You're talking about establishments?
Uh, no, actually, I'm talking about not 60, the 253, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so, to me, it seems like, you know, it might set up a free-for-all if people can, um, can add more terminals after the fact.
And again, that would, that would be in the details of the process that we, we would establish, and we could prevent that. Right now, there's really no process in what we've got adopted currently to allow somebody to kind of amend and add terminals. So we could establish a process for that. But I think what we're envisioning is somebody would come in asking for a license, and they would have to say, I want five terminals and, and I meet these requirements. And then our license would say, okay, you can have five terminals. Um, and that would, that would be it.
Okay, all right.
Other comments? All the women, bow. Oh, excuse me.
This just brought up the question, what you were saying. Let's say, we decide each establishment can only have three. Is that reasonable? Or can we do that legally?
Uh, we probably, if, if we're going to start to step back, we'd probably need to take a look at that and see how we, we would work that.
Okay.
Um, so when, when we put these established, when we put the requirements in, uh, in February of 18, we did it in a manner so that it was every, you know, everybody was basically grandfathered and could, you know, keep what they had operational at the time. Um, so if, if the council decided you wanted to step back from something, we probably need to look at how, how and if that could be done.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Council Member Black. Or, and Council Member Bray, I'll get, I'll ask you in a second.
I think, real quick, uh-
I wish you had a, a question.
No, no, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
What I was going to add, under the, uh, city manager comments, uh, you know, we, we stand ready to take notes, see what the next steps, next direction is from council. Uh, if you would go back, uh, one slide prior. Uh, we did think, we took the liberty to think that, uh, the three basic options, uh, were the obvious ones. But especially under, uh, option one, there are so many different variations and possibilities. You know, we cap, uh, in terms of total number of, uh, terminals, and then reassess, uh, once we hit that, uh, number, and sort of the, uh, the market, uh, drives, uh, you know, saturation of the market drives, uh, next steps. Uh, we look at, uh, the total number of establishments. Another area that we talked internally, like Jeff was saying, uh, you know, maybe there is an additional component if a, uh, establishment is going to locate or wants to locate in something that's zoned residential. You know, maybe a, additional set of rules apply in a scenario like that where they follow, uh, you know, automatically pushed to the plan commission. Automatically, there's a public hearing. Uh, so that, you know- So, you know, the possibilities for this council to decide, really, if you can think of it, it's something that we can consider as, you know, as staff, or whatever the next steps might be. I'm actually going to call Melissa up to the podium real quick. And it's not, not an economic development component, like we're trying to push one direction over the other. But there has been discussions, well, what has occurred, you know, with staff? You know, how many times has the economic development department or the clerk's office been contacted by potential new businesses, you know, regarding video gaming and the known moratorium that we have? You know, is there a number that's sitting on the sidelines waiting for council to make a decision? So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, just real quickly.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share that since the moratorium was put in place between the clerk's office and economic development department, we've heard from about approximately 15 businesses that are either current businesses here in the city or potential developments. People are reaching out to see where we are, what's the status, and just kind of awaiting to see what the decision of the moratorium will be. That's kind of where we are right now.
Melissa, can you give us an idea of what kind of businesses we're talking about?
Mostly restaurants. You know, it's really difficult to say, because a lot of them, you know, they do serve alcohol, but they also serve food. So, you know, whether you want to say, well, it's a, you know, a full-service restaurant, and then probably some smaller bar-type locations.
Alderman Painter.
Black was first.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, thank you. Can we go back to the slide with the options? Just, I think that's a really good one to have up there. Yeah, just to make explicit, I do think that we should be making an exception for Parkview. I'd love to see that come back next meeting. I don't know if that's shared by a majority of the council, but that would be expeditious as possible on that one. For me, you know, I just like to be clear in these types of conversations where I'm at, I really don't see a lot of viability in options two or three personally. I'd like to see us be somewhere in option one. I'm just, I'm really baffled by the number of casinos that we're trying to put in the state, and it's, it seems very strange to me that we're going to have, be surrounded by them at this point in time. So I don't know if that's going to have an impact on our market here currently, with people going to Danville. I'm not personally a fan of slots, I'm more of a table games kind of guy, but I, so I, I'm not here to judge on people's choices, but just, it's very bizarre that we are, that we were just exploding. For me personally, I'd like to do something where we let more of the market drive the price of the licensing fees, as well as the number of terminals. I think the problem here is the number of terminals. Then, and I guess I could hear an argument for establishment, but I'm mostly focused on the number of terminals. When I see the despair, the difference between Bloomington and Normal, it's quite stark in the number of terminals we have versus what they have in proportion to our city sizes. Personally, I think we should be doing something where, as I asked, number of terminals, and I think that number would be about 250, so just a few more, to speak to some of the concerns that we have. And every year, you go out and you bid for your license, and if there's more people that want terminals than there are licenses, the price goes up, and we take it from there. I think fraternal organizations, and I think social organizations should have a lower fee. So when I think about the VFWs of the world, I think about the Hungarian clubs of the world, I don't think that's the same as a truck stop, and they shouldn't have to pay the same as a truck stop. You know, a lot of folks have reached out to me about this topic specifically, and I've heard a lot of arguments about the mental health impact of video gaming, some of the money that's taken out of the community, and I hear that. Johnny sent some articles over, I really liked the one you sent about how Illinois is turning into the gaming capital of Midwest because it's just, it's stark. I mean, you can't deny what's going on. And again, this is from somebody who loves a casino. It's very, it's weird to think that we're going to be, this is in Vegas, or Atlantic City for that matter, nor do we want to turn into it. But the piece that I thought was most interesting was, in one of the articles you sent, it was talking about how Illinois has the worst bond rating of all the states, and we are least likely to write out any recession that comes forward. And there's a recession probably coming, no doubt. We can't grow for forever, so that makes me very worried about all this. So I guess, to bring it home locally, my opinion would be that something in the terms of option one, a little more flesh and the bones based on this conversation. I like the idea of limiting it to some number that's slightly more than we have right now, and I think 250 is a nice round number, that speaks to the concerns that are out there, and then we do a bidding process. It's going to be very important for me to see some leeway in the fee for the fraternal organizations and social organizations, and putting some bounds around that. But lastly, before, and I've already mentioned it before, but I want to make sure it doesn't miss it, Parkview Inn definitely want to see as soon as possible.
Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Painter.
Thank you. I'm for extending the moratorium forever, and here's why. The oversaturation of video gambling weakens the local economy. The proliferation of video gambling promotes an uptick in crime. The expansion of video gambling in the community makes some people very rich, namely, the corporations that manufacture and sell the machines, and the establishments that have them. Rarely does this trickle down into the broader economy. In the meantime, it makes some people very poor. It's been said that this moratorium is unfair, that it gives businesses an uneven playing field. I will argue that gambling itself is inherently unfair. Some people win and some people lose. How unfair? Life is unfair. Who are you worried about? Businesses who understandably want to belly up to the trough, or the rest of the community? I'm not anti-business, nor am I against people making lots of money. Good for them, just don't do it on the backs of the rest of us. Don't feather your nests on the misery of others. I will also say that if a business can't make it on its own merits without video gambling, then they're a crappy business, not to put too fine of a point on it. We as a nation are very slow to learn our lessons. We seem to take two steps forward and one step back. After the Civil War, when we expanded to the West, gambling was everywhere, and people came to realize what a serious problem it was. It prevented communities from getting off the ground because of all the violence and graft it promoted. By 1920, all gambling except horse racing was outlawed. Most states actually wrote it into their constitutions, so generations going forth would have a reminder of what happened. In 1970, Illinois rewrote its constitution. In 1971, bingo was legalized in Illinois. In 1974, the lottery was launched. In 1990, riverboat gambling was approved. In 1999, George Ryan declared that riverboats no longer had to sail the river. They all immediately docked and became casinos. In 2012, video gaming became legal. It should be noted that part of casino profits go to shore up the schools. Video gambling profits don't go to the schools, and they take away from casino business. So, video gaming takes money away from our schools. And by the way, Illinois is dead last for state funding of schools, which is why our property taxes are so high. 62% of all of our property taxes go to the schools. We just don't learn. Since 1970, has Illinois become a more vibrant economy? Has crime decreased, and are people prospering more? No. Does it all have to do with gambling? No, but a good part of it does. Illinois is ranked number one for gambling-related arrests per capita in the nation. We can put a stop to this blight in our community right now, just like some of the more prosperous Illinois communities have already done. Communities like Wheaton, River Forest, and Naperville. Let's strive to be like them. Illinois now has more places to bet than Nevada. Bloomington got an award for having so many video gaming machines. That's not an award we should be proud of. What's really sad is that lower-income areas are targeted for this kind of business. From time to time, I think that exceptions should be made. The Parkview Inn is one of them. And longstanding fraternal organizations probably should get a break, because their profits do go to good causes. But other than that, I see no reason to continue with this folly. We as council members are tasked with promoting a healthy, happy community. Within the past year, we've seen an uptick in violent crime, and McLean County has been placed on the poverty watch list. It behooves us as council members to do everything we can to restore balance to a situation that is tilting out of control. If you care anything about reducing crime, revitalizing the community, and easing poverty, you'll be for extending the moratorium too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Milowamway. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Bray. Did you, you don't have a light to press, so we're, I'm focusing on you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you calling on me. I'm interesting, I'm listening in carefully to all the comments of my fellow council members. I've come to this meeting with a philosophy that citizens will ask for goods and services from their municipality, from their government, and I think that they're thoughtful when they make those requests, recognizing that they themselves are charged with paying for those goods and services. So this concept that you transfer the responsibility for the goods and services that you seek and desire as a well-biding and good citizen onto someone else through their vanity practices, through their entertainment practices, is not something that I favor. And therefore, as I look at the VGTs, I look at what we're learning about the impacts of these particular kinds of game behaviors. In particular, I think we've had some, we've had some resources shared with us, that some groups have called this the specific tool of the gambling addiction. So those that who develop gambling addiction sometimes start through this situation with the VGTs, and that's been labeled as the crack cocaine of gambling and addiction. That kind of thing is not something that I think we want to grow in our community. And in fact, I would like to explore how we could bring about a reduction in the number of machines. I will stop there because I think that gives me further of where my, where my mind is right now, but I want to continue to listen in, and my, with my colleagues in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. Councilmember Milowamway, and then Painter.
Sure. I, I wanted for us to, because I don't have a sense of what the numbers are in terms of people talking about gambling addiction. So I, not that I'm questioning anything, but I think, you know, locally, I just don't have a sense of, you know, how things are. And that's something that I think would be good for, good information for us to have, particularly since we've had these machines for the past, you know, four or five years. And to also see what, you know, all this expansion of gambling is going to do in future years. So I think that's something that we should be monitoring to inform some of our decisions. But also, generally, I'm not one to, you know, I'm not a big fan of gambling. I, you know, I don't do it, I avoid it, like the plague. I, you know, I think I've done it once or twice, just for kicks, to see what it was like, because I was actually in the airport in Vegas, and I was like, oh, let me try this and see what happens. I lost everything, which was $2. But...
Big spender there.
Right, I'm a big spender. But I also don't want to impose, you know, because some people have different ways of entertaining themselves. So I'm always very cautious and careful not to impose my way of life on others. But at the same time, though, for us in Bloomington, one of the things that I, you know, and I know the article that Alderman Painter sent us also made me think about that, is the fact that, before we make all these decisions in a vacuum, we need to think about, what is this going to do for the city of Bloomington? Because when I think of Bloomington, I think of Bloomington as our brand, as a city. We are a city that is generally, when I think Bloomington, I tend to think fairly prosperous, really good school, family-friendly, good place to, you know, for your kids to go to school, and good place to raise a family. And that's one of the reasons why people usually, you know, come back to Bloomington. If they've been here, they tend to come back, and if you've been here for college, they'll come back because of all those reasons. So, and I'm not saying that to necessarily advocate one position or another, but I'm just saying that for us to think about, what is this going to do to the community? You know, when you add massive expansion of gambling, you're also adding recreational marijuana altogether. So we do need to really think about those things before we make a... But I will tell you for sure, I would be for option number one, whichever form that it's going to take, you know, whether it's a reduction of the number of terminals, or, you know, limiting what we have right now, but certainly not expansion.
Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Carrillo.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to something that Councilmember Milowamway brought up, which is the tracking of addiction. And, you know, based on the articles that I have read and the research I have done on this issue, you know, part of the reason that we can't, that we haven't been doing a good job at tracking it is that the resources haven't been invested in actually protecting people and responding to the gambling addiction problems that have come with the explosion of gambling in the state. And so, kind of, you know, the state is saying, we care about this, but isn't putting the money behind it to actually show that we care and that we want to get people help. So I think that's something worth keeping in mind. I am curious, and this is not a question I sent ahead of time, so I'm sorry, but do we have a sense of what the median, or average, or whatever good number it is for us to think about, per terminal that is actually going to businesses? I mean, I'm guessing, I guess it would vary on the popularity of the establishment, but like, even a range would be helpful to know...
That's something that we could get you.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea of the dollars that I've seen in Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Painter has some specifics, but from what I've seen, it's not unusual to be over $100,000 of profit. Now, that's not typical, that may not be the median, the median might be more like $75,000 to $80,000, but it could be as little as $30,000 or $40,000 or $50,000. It can be closer to $140,000, $150,000. I do remember this, having a conversation with the, this is all public record, but with the owner of Mugsy's when we were thinking of putting a video terminal in, and he said he had $1 million invested in Mugsy's, and my response was, I appreciate that, but you get all of that back in six years without selling one drop of alcohol or a wing. You get it back from just having those five video terminals. So the net video terminal in six years would have provided all of his private investment back to him, net income, now minus whatever electricity he had paid to run the, you know, the video terminals. But one of our, this is not me, although I could have said this, one of our longtime liquor commissioners said that video terminals were kind of like a license to print money. But it is, it's definitely something that obviously is important for us to deal with. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I'm interested.
Please, would you say it for the record?
I know of two bars that are not really large establishments, and they rake in $60,000 a year from their...
So it sounds not far away from the numbers that you had also heard. And then, my other question is, how did we land on the 500 number? I have one more question after that.
The 500 number?
As the licensing fee.
Back in March, when that was approved, I think we looked at, you know, Tim, I don't know if you want to answer this, if you've got a...
Didn't it range from zero to, it ranged from zero to, well, we were the only zero of a metro city, to $1,000, and then some, and we kind of, it's sort of safe to say we kind of took the middle?
So we base it off of other municipalities and what they were doing?
We did when we presented, and we felt that some places where it was challenged and it went to court, that was up to $1,000 per terminal. And likely, you know, when we implemented video gaming in this community... And likely, you know, when we implemented video gaming in this community, if there had been, you know, that kind of fee, there probably would have been no outcry from the local businesses because video gaming was something that they wanted so badly. But we just picked a middle-of-the-road number, felt that that's where we had consensus of the council at that time.
And then I just want to clarify...
If I may, real quick, just want to add on to a point to your question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we had to charge a fee and not a percentage of the income by the terminal. That's by state law.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. So the 60,000 number or whatever, I mean, just, I know that's not based on, you know, all the numbers locally, but that would be for five terminals, right? That would be for the maximum amount of terminals?
Right, you can figure it out with what I sent you, and then this little sheet tells you how to do that. And you can figure it out for every single one.
Gotcha.
I think 60, I could be wrong, but I think 60 is actually on the low side of the median. If you've got five terminals, then the net income is usually a little higher than that, I think. It could be, again, I could be wrong.
And then one last qualifying question for Councilmember Painter, which is, one of the things you mentioned was wanting to see this pulled back or wanting to see the moratorium continue, but then also being somewhat supportive of the Park View Inn still getting the license, just want to clarify where the thinking comes from.
Well, it comes from, I talked to some people and discovered that they had video terminals before the place burnt down, and they figured they were going to get to keep them afterwards. And so not only did they build exactly what they had before, but they built better. And they were expecting on the come. And then the father passed the business down to his son, so it changed hands. So he, you know, was supposedly, you know, out of the running for having terminals again, and they kind of got caught with their pants down. And it's a very, very good business that most everybody in the neighborhood is very supportive of, so I think they deserve to get their terminals back so they can pay for what they built.
So just, yeah, so just making sure that I'm understanding, what you'd be supportive of is continuing the moratorium, but the establishments that were grandfathered in to keep all of those, right? So you're not suggesting that we pull back to three, three terminals or something less than what we have now?
No, I'm not, but I also think if a business closes, that that's it, and that anything that moves in should know they're not going to get a new license.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bowlin, and then Mathie.
I brought everything that Councilmember Painter sent, and she is absolutely correct. The state pushed through a bill back in 2012 with the idea of stimulating the economy, and it didn't. And here we go again. A bill was pushed through to stimulate the economy. I'm very business-friendly, so I'm not in favor of continuing the moratorium forever. If it's important to have a business model that includes video gambling, then it should be for everyone. Or a moratorium continuing forever indefinitely, where if they move or lose their business and it's not replaced, we should actually look at prohibition in a different conversation. So my suggestion would be, you know, lift the moratorium, let it go for, until we decide if we want to do prohibition. If that's what Naperville does, then maybe we should follow them. I don't know how that would work legally, but, you know, when someone's up for a license, maybe we just don't renew licenses or something. I'll leave that up to you to figure out. I mean, to me, having a moratorium forever would basically be the same as prohibition, at least for new businesses coming in.
Good. Yeah, okay, and then Alderman Mathie.
Well, really quickly, Naperville and Wheaton and River Forest, they never allowed them there. And, you know, my thought is, if they're in an establishment already, then they become dependent on that money. And, you know, to yank that away from them, just to have a prohibition all of a sudden, I think that would be counterproductive to our local economy, but anyway.
Okay. Alderman Mathie, and then, excuse me, Councilmember Mathie, and then Councilmember Emick.
Thanks, Mayor. So I find myself in agreement with pretty much everything that Scott said. I like the idea of limiting the total number of machines versus the number of establishments. I also, Jeff, I would be more interested in keeping the number of machines at, we've got a limit of five right now, I would like to keep it at five and not allow those expanded numbers even though the state passed those. So I'd be in favor of that, too. And then the one thing I was thinking about kind of goes to something that Johnny had said, is that I don't think that we can pull away from the places that already have them. But I do, I think, you know, we would be in a good position if we didn't guarantee that the licenses transferred with the business. So if the business moves, if the business sells, I want to make it clear that it's not an automatic guarantee that somebody is going to, just because the old business had them, that the new business is going to have them, you know, under the new ownership either. So, you know, I think that there should be, and that puts the onus on the business owner to plan accordingly. If we tell them this right now, you know, as they're doing their estate and the succession planning for their businesses, they can make decisions now based on the fact that, you know, it's not guaranteed that these are going to transfer, right? And it's, the only thing that I, I'm not sure that I agree with Scott on is the bidding of the licenses. I would, my only fear would it becomes a pay-to-play scenario where smaller establishments that currently have them get outbid by bigger companies that come in, be they chains or some sort of, somebody with deeper pockets than some of our local small businesses do, and they get priced out of being able to do this, you know, because it goes back to that same thing that if you've currently got them, as Johnny said, that if your business model starts to depend on that revenue coming in, of who you can hire, how you're going to invest your money in future expansion and things of that nature, and if we had a lottery system or a bidding system where you could bid on them, you know, now maybe we do that for new licenses, right? If licenses become available at some time in the future, but not for people who are currently grandfathered in, I wouldn't want to see that. So it could be a dual approach, but I think having it so that everybody has to bid every year could cause some pretty serious chaos. So, thanks.
Thanks. Before I move to City Councilmember Emick, just wanted to clarify, it essentially is currently the case, because you don't even, if you sell, let's say you sold your, you don't sell liquor at your establishment, but if you sold your establishment that was a, let's say a restaurant that sold quite a bit of alcohol, that does not transfer when you sell your property. You have, the new owner has to get a new liquor license. So a liquor license doesn't transfer, and so therefore, you know, we still do have control over that.
I know that, and you know that, but that is not the common expectation, right? I mean, we've had this conversation just recently, that people, if they sell a bar or restaurant, the new person coming in expects that they are automatically going to be allowed because it was there before. And so I just think that it's something that we could make explicitly clear, just to prevent miscommunication in the future.
Right, no, I get that. Thank you so much. Councilmember Emick, apologize.
So it, the increase in the terminal fee, are the prior establishments grandfathered, or do they also have to pay that fee?
You mean the $500 terminal fee? No, anybody new that gets a license, nobody was grandfathered from that. Everybody that had an establishment before with video gaming, they all had to get a license, and now they all have to pay that fee.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for the conversation, it's really helped to solidify my thinking. And I'm wondering if we might, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but would our community have an option of creating a self-exclusion list here? Because I know the state did not add that to their, to their law that just passed in terms of just providing more mental health support.
I mean, that's something we can certainly look at.
Okay. And that...
Forgive me, what's a self-exclusion list?
If somebody suffers from a gambling addiction, then they can, they can create or be supported in the community to create a ban, you know, so I, they will not let me gamble at this establishment because I have generated the self-exclusion clause. Well, and the penalty is that you don't get to keep any of the winnings, and then you're, I think, fined on top of that or impossibly arrested. So there's dire self-imposed consequences. Right, you don't, you don't want, right, you don't want to violate it. And I did appreciate reading through everything that Councilwoman Painter sent, and the state is trying very hard to balance this new, you know, gambling central that we've created by increasing the Help for Mentally Affected by $6.8 million. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. There's also an $8 million increase in gaming board regulations. So I guess I'm finally also falling into option one, because I think that if the regulation is thoughtful, and I know that the Park View Inn is an exception, but there are many reasons why that establishment could have an excellent business and also have gambling on site. If the regulations are thoughtful and there's an enforcement of the code, and we really think about what it means to potentially cap and to enforce and to protect vulnerable citizens, I would be very much in favor of location restrictions, for example, then I think it makes sense to go forward. So, thank you.
Aldo, excuse me, Councilmember Carrillo.
Maybe we've talked about this enough that I'm now confused, but I'm trying to discern what the difference is between option three and option one, given that we don't bump up the number of licenses.
Well, I think, is an option one some, just a bunch of ideas?
Well, yeah, I mean, option one is, could take a lot of different directions, but I think the difference between option one and option three is option three is saying, we're not going to look at, you know, adding any more gaming, with the exception of the Park View. We're not going to even, you know, don't come back to us, we're not going to be talking about this for another several months or whatever. Option one is going to be putting in place a structure where people could apply for and receive video gaming licenses, and maybe, you know, you guys set the cap as to how many of those are going to be, you know, but it's putting in place that structure for people to get a new video gaming license.
So, I mean, I guess one distinction, too, is permanence, right? Like a moratorium feels more like, this is what we're doing right now until we figure a more permanent solution out versus one feels like it'd be more permanent. But I guess if we, in option one, there is the possibility that some places would close, and then those licenses would then become available for new establishments, right? As opposed to the status quo where there's no new licenses for folks who aren't grandfathered in.
Could be, but we could also set it up, and some communities do this with their liquor licenses, they'll say, you know, we've got 20 tavern licenses available. And if they've got 20 taverns out there, and one goes out of business, so they only have 19 operating, they'll go in and they'll amend their code to say, okay, now there's only 19 tavern licenses available. So the council or the board always has control over how many, you know, somebody can't just sneak in there and, you know, fill number 20 and be that tavern. The county, they have to come to the council and convince them that I'm worthy of getting a license, you should give me a license, I meet the criteria, and then it's up to you to do.
Wouldn't, if I could just piggyback off you, you know, you still have the floor, but wouldn't the, as part of the option of one, in addition to or perhaps instead of a specific number, could it include number three, including license standards? In other words, having some very clear criteria, I think some have been, you know, alluded to, perhaps not a neighborhood establishment, especially if there's already a neighborhood establishment within a certain... Yeah, please.
I don't know if someone is on the floor now, or if I can speak...
Please, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. When I look at the options presented, I think I would favor option one with the idea, and I'd like to hear your opinion on this, that we take a look at right sizing the number of licenses.
Kim, I think we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay.
Oh, that's better, that's better. If you could, get closest, as close to the phone as possible.
I'm favoring option one with the additional idea, that I'd like to hear anyone's thoughts on this, of right sizing the number of VGT licenses. And what I mean by that is, the number we currently have just seems to be an extraordinary number for our population, when, if we gauge it by other areas, or you know, we know that the town just around north has far fewer of these machines than we do. And that's not just a proportionate amount based on the population, it's quite, quite a few or less. So I wonder if we could visit or try to get some information about right sizing the number. So maybe the right number for our population would be ultimately a goal of 185 or 175. And possibly we have almost like a combo of option one and option three in some respects to try to achieve our goals of getting down to the 175, if that's the right number. And then we could make changes as we go along, if there's a particular business model that's brought to us and we're excited about it and we want to vote it in, we could make an amendment. And I'll say one more thing, and then I'll stop for reactions, and hopefully you're able to hear this. I do favor grandfathering in the Park View Inn. So I'll stop there.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Bray. And I apologize to Councilmember Carrillo, because she did have the floor, so I'm going back to you.
Yeah, no problem. I actually was going to bring up something that was already brought up, which is, if the thought is to right-size the number, if that number seems too high to a majority of the folks around the table, then it does seem like we need some combination of one and two, so as to not yank those terminals out from businesses that currently rely on that income, but still be able to get that number down. But I guess I'm not clear whether that's what other council members were shooting for, whether they want to see the number stay the same, see that number grow with some restriction, or whether they want to see that number go down. I think that that's the clarity that I don't think I'm getting from folks' comments.
Given, I'm going to turn to you, Councilmember Crable, in just a second, but it seems like we've got several variables moving back and forth here that I think administration's going to need clarity on, and I don't think we're going to solve them this evening. So I think that this is a subject that we need to continue, and then if possible, maybe list some of the variables that we're considering. And I have to say, let me turn to Councilmember Crable before I ask for us to maybe have this at a subsequent meeting.
And I'll just be brief, I mean, I don't have any new ideas. I certainly appreciate Johnny's, Alderman Painter's, Alderman Painter's interest in this issue and her expertise. And I really don't like the fact that this really... And I really don't like the fact that this really, you know, impacts the poorest segment of our society. It's a regressive type of attacks, and it seems like the state has done this as a moneymaker versus looking at, not looking at the cost of this at all, as can be seen by their recent amendment that didn't put more of the burden on the manufacturers of the machine, but increased the amount people can bet so they can lose more. So, I would say that, I would be more in line with option three, and if it's option one, it should be very restrictive, so that's all I'll say.
Thank you. And having dealt with this as liquor commissioner for a long time, I've learned far more about video gaming machines than I ever wanted to know as somebody who has, I put two quarters in a slot machine back in 1981 and lost both of them, and I've never, other than that, I haven't gambled, so I'm not a gambler. But, and I do want to thank Councilmember Painter for extensive research on this, and as she speaks, she's pointing out the social justice aspects of this that I think are, pull at my heartstrings and are unmistakable. The only, literally the only concern that I have on the other end is some of what we've talked about before in terms of economic development, and maybe that's what can, under number option one, maybe there are certain circumstances. Like, for example, a building that I'm looking at right now, a part of right now, had, this possibility of redevelopment did fall through, but one of the things was having a bar that used to exist there, but part of their model to make the business work on the first floor was to have video gaming machines. So, there are some situations where that does tip the balance, but maybe that is something that if we have some very specific criteria, it has to come back to this council to decide whether or not that's the case. Personally, I prefer that, because I don't like an artificial, non-market-driven number. I don't know what right sizing is, but I'm literally just speaking out loud, because I wanted to hear what everybody had to say, because I do thank Alderwoman Painter, because she raises lots and lots and lots of very, very, very important points that I think are unmistakable. But, what I'm suggesting that we do, and I will turn to you, Councilmember Matthew, in a second, because we are, we've articulated, I think, the problem and many of the issues and many of the variables, is unfortunately dump this in the lap of the staff, and I'm also looking at Melissa for economic development advice, too, for maybe some of the options that we have in front of us as we move forward. Because obviously, we're not voting on anything tonight, but I don't think we're ready to craft a policy, especially since we're way over in our budgeted time anyway, we could extend that, but I don't know that it would be helpful this evening. I think maybe thinking about this, looking back at some of what Alderwoman Painter has sent us, and some of our other thoughts and options, might be helpful, and either bring this up at another meeting, or maybe even another committee of the whole meeting. Councilmember Matthew?
I was actually going to ask some questions about this idea of right sizing. It seems to me that Illinois was actually one of the trailing states that legalized video gaming machines, certainly not a leader on that one. And so, I was wondering, maybe there's somebody that's already done some research between, you know, we've got competing interests of the actual terminal providing companies, as well as we've got nonprofits, and maybe there is some research that's been done in terms of a number of machines per population or something of that nature. It could already exist out there, I honestly don't know, but it'd be, it'd be an interesting topic point.
Right. I think, just in terms of the immediate comparison between us and Normal, for example, one of the reasons why we've got more video gaming machines, it's not just any per person, is that we've got the bars.
They were dry, they were dry.
Technically, they don't have bars. Now, they do have some video gaming cafes in Normal, but, you know, and that's the, that's the difficulty, but I'm sure there's data out there.
We can also provide some information on comparable cities like Champaign. They have 278, Peoria has 271, Decatur has 416, Springfield has a, I don't, I'm not reading my handwriting on that, but, you know, so there are other comparable communities that we can look at, too, in terms of how many they have. Danville, which is going to get a land casino, only has 141, though. You know, so, there's, there's just all kinds of information that we can provide on this. Rockford has 460. So, it's all over the board.
Okay. Then, in terms of Mayor, what you were asking about, I would be, definitely be in favor of not expanding more. Whether we stay the same or we start to trend downwards, I could go either way in that, but I definitely am not interested in an expansion of additional machines. So, that'd be where I'm at.
So, we've got several different variables about expanding additional machines. What might the standards look like? If there are going to be exceptions, then they would need to come to the council. What are the criteria that we in future councils would look at for that? And we do have a few. Okay, we're going to have to be fairly quick unless we extend the time, because we're about 100% over budget. Okay? I'm going to start with Councilmember Carrillo.
Yeah, I just want to say that I don't want to see this get dumped on the staff's lap, because I do think it's a policy-level decision.
By that, I mean articulating the options.
Right, right, right. So, I would be interested in being a part of even just an informal working group, maybe a couple of us can work with staff to come up with a proposal that we can bring at the next committee of the whole meeting. You know, I would be willing to be a part of that group, but I also, if somebody else wants to be a part of it, I certainly think Councilmember...
If that's a volunteer, I'm kind of looking at Alderwoman...
Yeah, thank you for your leadership, and I do think Councilmember Painter needs to be a part of that.
And then maybe, we can have up to three, because I won't be part of it, so we can have up to three all the persons.
I was going to throw Scott under the bus.
I think that's probably a good idea. Maybe maybe help work with staff.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, I just want to say, like, we want to be a part of, we want to be a part of it.
So I'm not dumping on staff as much as that damn mayor would.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And then maybe there, and I hate to throw another monkey wrench into it, but just based on some of what Councilmember Painter and Emick suggested, are there some ways that we might be able to channel, if there are future revenues, if we decide to go, you know, we give two or three or five more licenses earmark that money for people with gambling addictions in our neighborhoods? Anyway.
So, Councilmember Painter, you want to be a part of that? I'm interested in being a part of that, but I don't want to take up somebody else's space. Is there anybody else?
Can I have a third person?
Hi, this is Alderman Bray.
Yes.
I know we're talking about forming a working group, but I...
Informally, just to work, informally, just to work with staff on some options.
Well, I think I'd like to give the city manager an opportunity to consider that, whether or not that would be helpful or needful.
Okay. Well, let me ask you. Well, let's ask him. Do you think that would be helpful?
Get kind of an opportunity to send in our thoughts and look at options at the same time. So, I'm not sure that I, I think a working group is necessarily a good idea here, but I'm interested in other thoughts.
Okay. Mr. Gleason, do you think that would be helpful, or is that maybe too much for staff?
No, I think, given this topic, it would be helpful. You know, this is one that you guys are looking to set policy. I definitely do not have clear direction, you know, at this point. You know, I think the one thing that I do know is, we're not going to let the market drive the number, so that's off the table. But, we're somewhere, you know, in a moratorium range to controlled growth, or a cap on the growth. But, there's, you know, a number of other components that we need to consider, and whether it's a working group to assist, or whether it's going to be three-on-one meetings as we progress before we have our next public discussion, those definitely need to occur.
That might even be, and then you don't have to worry about the three that we're sort of informally working with you as we go forward. And so, Councilmember Bowlin, you were okay with being one of the informal three?
We're going to have an informal and then three-on-one also.
What I was recommending was that, yeah, that the three work with staff to come up with a proposal, just to give folks something more fleshed out to react to.
Could even be proposals, could be plural.
Yeah, sure, sure. And then that could be discussed in three-on-ones, and then also at the next committee of the whole meeting.
You good with that?
If I may.
Hold on, are you good with that?
Well...
I mean, I'm good with being on, being one of the three to...
Well, I'm confused. I would happy, be happy to work with my colleagues.
Perfect. Okay. Councilmember Black, because I think we're hitting the point of diminishing marginal returns for everybody.
Okay. That was, we made a fast decision on that one. Yeah, I guess, I like the idea of a working group, but I also think what would be very important here is that I'm hearing a lot of different ideas on the table, and I have a lot of questions about the practicality and the legal implementation of, if we decide 175 or 182 or whatever that number is, what happens to the ones that are currently in existence? So, I almost would prefer a conversation like this, but a more flushed-out menu, options around option one, so then we can then come back with a future proposal in conjunction with whatever group wants to go together on that. I unfortunately just don't know enough about this topic to really provide a lot of value to that conversation, but I am very curious to know the different provisions and what that could look like, and then we select based on what the majority decides, as we've done here tonight, just in terms of high-level philosophical policy.
Okay. Councilmember Crable?
We have a moratorium that ends September 1st. We've got a lot of ideas here, and I think businesses, whether we, whatever we do, want certainty. So, I'd really like to get all this done by September 1st, whatever it is.
Thank you very much. And I think we're trying to do that, so, thank you very much. And at this point, we move to city manager, you had a report, and then...
Were we going to talk about marijuana, or no? Just more information. I mean, I always like to conversation.
We could talk about marijuana and other non-controversial subjects at another late, at another meeting.
Yeah.
If you really want to talk about marijuana, Alderman Black...
Oh, boy.
Mr. Gleason, did you have any other reports for us?
I do. Three quickies. We have a special liquor meeting, that's tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, just wanted, I know council is aware, that's more so for the community. This was after a discussion that we previously had, that the request came for this special liquor meeting. So, that, again, is tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, right here. Number two, I will be out next week, work-related deputy city manager, Tias, will be sitting right here for the council meeting on July 22nd. And then also, wanted to share, the public announcement was made, but wanted to share that the Economic Development Council has selected their executive director. I was part of the selection committee, along with county administrator Camille Rodriguez, and also town manager Pam Reese, and others that were a part of the board, but very excited. Patrick Hoven, I know him, and we had a good selection to choose from, and the board selected Patrick, and I'm excited about the, you know, next chapter in the EDC, in our relationship going forward. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on that. I very much appreciate that, that obviously the EDC is critical for all of us. We don't really have Alderman at comics, but go ahead.
Oh, no, just a quick question, Rex. When is his first day? When does he start?
His first day is August 1st.
August 1st, okay. Excellent. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Carrillo, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're opposed.